So we will be having public comment time at 6 o'clock. If you plan on speaking, we have a sign up sheet that's right outside the door. We'd ask that you sign up if you haven't done that, so that, again, we can try to keep some kind of order to what's going on here. I'll first ask to have our pledge and invocation. Mr. Campbell.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us since our last meeting. As always, we're thankful for the students and families of Carroll County and the opportunity you've given us to serve their needs. Tonight, we lift up our coworkers and thank you for their passion and unyielding dedication they've given to our school system. As always, we're reminded of and thankful for the incredible responsibility we bear to create an environment in Carroll County Public Schools where all students can live and learn peace and harmony. We pray tonight for the members of the Carroll County Public School Board. We understand that serving in a leadership position is a daily challenge, and the circumstances in which they are working under presents many additional obstacles. We ask to provide these leaders with the wisdom necessary to make good decisions, peace to live with those decisions, and humility to always seek your direction and guidance first. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The next matter that we have is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to move the superintendent's report, item E, to first item of discussion.
Are you talking, you're talking about this?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. There's such a crowd downstairs, they can't all get up in the elevators, and part of them don't know about one door or the other when they say it's sealed off.
Well, Mr. Campbell, could you step down and let them know? So if I understand your motion, if I understand your motion correctly, are you wanting to move it to the beginning of the superintendent's report or move it up in the agenda?
Item first on the agenda, please.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion.
I'll second.
Who did that?
I'll second.
Mr. Spencer. Okay, so I have a motion made and a second to move the superintendent's report from, or an item in the superintendent's report, rather, item E on the agenda, up to the first item to be presented. Is there any discussion about that? Hearing no discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, that motion passes, and so the superintendent's statement, item E, will be the first, we'll assume now, just ask him pursuant to that motion, ask him to go ahead and make his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everybody hear me?
I don't think I can. Tammy, on line two.
They're not working correctly. You're going to have to speak.
Got you. Thank you.
This is a response to the nondiscrimination protection for transgender student legislation and statute proposed by the state, federal government. Upon recommendation by the Virginia School Board Association, the legal reference to subjects in 22 dot 1 dash 23 dot 3 was added to the nondiscrimination, equal educational opportunities, prohibition against harassment and retaliation, and other policies that reference the topic. No one policy needs to be approved to provide equal rights to any particular subgroup of students. All subgroups, including race, disability status, religion, gender, or gender identity, are afforded equal rights. All children should be treated with dignity and respect. It is not necessary to adopt the Virginia Department of Education's model policy for the treatment of transgender students, since those requirements are already met by existing Carroll County Public School policies. Any bathroom issues that may arise concerning transgender students will be handled by the school administration on a case-by-case basis. Additionally, in order to address the privacy concerns of our citizens, the Carroll County School Board will be requesting funding from the Carroll County Board of Supervisors to renovate and convert Carroll County Public Schools' bathroom and shower facilities, beginning with Carroll County High School and Carroll County Middle School to single-user facilities. Floor-to-ceiling stalls have already been installed in CCAHS bathrooms as a temporary measure. Single-user bathrooms are currently available in all schools to all students. Any questions, members of the board?
Just one quick question. Can you just talk a little bit about, a little bit more about the, like, the single-use facilities, like, the number that we would have at the middle school and the high school, and ballpark cost?
We've already been talking to an architect who's had a general contractor come and look at the conversion of facilities. You're looking at about $300 a square foot under today's building cost. That's going to equate to about $900,000 for the high school renovations and 1.2 million for the middle schools. And what that would do is it would basically give us 39 single-user stalls at the high school compared to the 34 toilets that we currently have, and it would give us 73 single stalls at the middle school as opposed to the 61 that we currently have.
Being that they're single stalls, do you think, I mean, you've got more capacity, do you think we could do it with the same capacity? Because there's not going to always be all girls or all, I mean, you're going to have their single stall, so they're just open bathrooms.
They're going to be single-user facilities. At the high school, there'll be a bathroom, a toilet with a sink in the stall with a closed door walled up.
How many of those will be handicap accessible?
They will be, will have handicap-accessible restrooms in each room.
Okay, that's better than we have now.
Those bathrooms, is it floor-to-ceiling?
It will be walls, walls, solid walls.
And the door goes out to the hallway?
Yes, the different designs at the different schools, but they will, they are private.
And y'all got, so you can have some sensors for air quality control orders to make sure nobody's smoking in these?
All HVAC systems would have to be redone, as well as the plumbing. Any kind of sensors that are in there would still be added in there. You know, the cost is a lot because it is a complete redo of your most expensive items, your HVAC and your plumbing.
Did the, did the architect tentatively, did he give an, did he give an opinion about the, about the idea of doing this?
I thought it was a good idea. I thought that it, we would be one of the first divisions in this area of the state to do, have a solution like this.
And then, of course, we'd have to adopt a later policy that a boy and girl can't, you know, it's a single-use bathroom.
It's a single-use bathroom.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, and I would just like to comment, too, with the single use. You know, having, like, a lot of folks, I mean, having spent 30-plus years in education, the single-use facility restroom will benefit all of our kids. Having served as a principal, I can recall kids, parents checking them out to go home to use the restroom. So, you know, it's, times have changed. When I played athletics at high school and we showered in a gang shower with 15 guys, that's just not how young folks function today. They want that privacy. So I think that this will benefit all of our kids, to have the ability to go to a restroom privately in the middle of the day at any given time. So I think it's a good call.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the Carroll County School Board not adopt the Virginia Model Policy for the treatment of transgender students, and instead continue to follow our existing nondiscrimination, equal education, and nonharassment policies that provide equal treatment of all students regardless of race, disability, status, religion, gender, and any other characteristic predicted by law.
All right, heard that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion being first and seconded, to, I have to confess, that's more than I can remember to recite, but...
Basically, not adopt the Virginia Model Policy as our policy.
And follow the policy we have in place, correct? So I've been first and seconded. Any discussion on that?
And this will pursue the construction phase to get our bathrooms all single-stall. Right now, we have five.
Right, we'll, of course, need everyone's support to rally the BOS, Board of Supervisors, for that funding. So, so any other, any other commentary? Mr. Martin?
I went to the last one-room school in Carroll County, the last one, Schwartz Creek. Thank goodness we didn't have this issue come up there because we had, on one side of the hill, the girls' bathroom, and then the boys was on the other side of the hill. I guess we would have had to done another toilet in between or something. It was, you know, and so I give thanks that it wasn't in effect then.
Right. Any other comments?
And this motion is clearly that we're, we are opposing the transgender recommendation.
We're opposing the model policies recommended by the Virginia Department of Education.
That's out. All right.
And our, and our policies that we fall back to have been in place?
For years.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comment? Mr. Martin?
As, as a former principal, a long time in the county, and Principal Bill there, I'd say you would agree. We never, there was zero tolerance for any kid that misbehaved in the bathroom, and we lowered the boom on those kids because that was an area that they were supposed to act in a certain way, and if they didn't, they got to go see the principal in a hurry. And...
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? If not, those in favor of Mr. Hendrick's motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
So we need money.
Yes, we do. Yes, sir.
So we're going to start construction, but at the same time, reach out to the county? Do we need a motion to reach out to the county for this 2.1 million?
I would...
How do we do this?
Yeah, maybe just direct the superintendent to immediately open those conversations of the funds. What do you think?
So we, do we need a motion to ask the superintendent to engage in these discussions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that Dr. Burnett immediately have conversation with the county to pursue 2.2 million in funds, so we can move forward quickly and immediately with this project.
I'll second that.
Motion first and seconded to approach the Board of Supervisors to seek this funding to, you know, help deal with this dilemma once and for all. Any, any comment?
Mark, your most educated guess on this, since this also deals with air conditioning and ventilation, couldn't they use the money that they've just received to help us with this? Because wasn't modeling bathrooms and air conditioning ventilation?
Their money? I don't know. I figure they probably already allocated their COVID money, just like we have ours.
But it could be used. They got like 12 billion.
Yeah.
I mean, they got $12 billion.
It could be used for that, yes. I would assume.
Okay, all right. Well, that's part of the discussion you can have.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So I'd just ask that he report back to us at the next board meeting about, about where things stand, if that's agreeable. So, but we still have a motion that's, we have a motion first and seconded. Any additional discussion on that issue? Hearing none, those in favor? Yes, Mr. Martin?
What, what will be the consequence of not following the state guidelines?
Well, you're asking me for, you're asking, you're asking for a legal opinion, and of course, I'm not the lawyer for the board. I think it's everyone's belief that our policy satisfies what the requirements are, and that's, that's what I understand the consensus of the minds are here. Obviously, it's just like I tell anyone when they come to see me, we could all be being sued right at this minute for any crazy thing. And so, but at the moment, you know, where I think the vote that was taken here tonight reflects our combined belief that our policies satisfy and protect from discrimination all children. And that being, and that being the case, there's no, there's really no need for anything additional.
And while someone's trying to sue us, we'll be building private stall bathrooms.
And passing the hat to everybody that's here tonight.
We could use help. We could use all of you here to go to the Board of Supervisors meeting and help request that 2.1 million dollars. This fixes the high school and the middle school, doesn't touch the elementary schools. And I didn't mean to speak out of line, and I apologize, but everybody here needs to support us now more than ever, because this is the only out.
About the state?
The state gave us 12 million in our county just recently. That's why I asked about this COVID money, because as long as we're doing remodeling with, I think it would fall under COVID money.
It would have to. The county's already in too big a hole with this. Add another 2 million or something like that, in my opinion.
Well, opinions vary about that, that's for sure.
But anyway, I'm sorry. So do we need a vote, or we?
Do you have a motion on the floor?
I have a motion on the floor.
Right, I'm just, Mr. Martin's got his hand up. Mr. Martin, go ahead.
No, I don't need to go to the bathroom.
Okay.
I raised my hand up. My sister, I got to see her today building fence, and she asked what was going on, and I tried to describe this situation to her, and her comments was, well, that's crazy. And I got a feeling if you polled everybody in here that they would say it was crazy, too.
Yep.
And it is, so.
Okay, any other comment? If not, I'm going to call the, I'm going to call the vote. Those in favor of, I believe that last motion was seeking the funding from the Board of Supervisors to the tune of the estimate of the architect that's been working with Dr. Burnett, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right. All right, I think we're ready now to move on with the rest of our, rest of our meeting. We've got time to, we've got time to do some things before public comment. Let's see, the consent agenda, do I have a, do I have a motion to consider items A and B under the consent agenda in a group?
I'll say move.
Okay, been a motion made to combine items A and B under the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion about that? Hearing no discussion, those in favor of approving the consent agenda items A and B as a package signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, the consent agenda is approved. Now we're on to our action items. Membership in the Virginia High School League, Mr. Questionberry?
We ask that you approve that for the upcoming school year. We are asking to participate in 19 sports for the upcoming school year. That does require board action.
All right, been, been an action item, is, does anyone have a motion related to item A?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, first and seconded, any discussion concerning item A? Hearing no discussion, those in favor of approving item A signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, item A under action items related to Virginia High School League, membership is approved. Item B, select delegate and alternate for the V S B A business session at the annual convention. That actually has that under my name, but as you know, each year we go, and this will be the, this will be the first year in two years, because we didn't go last year. Last year, the, the state convention was held electronically, and I was our delegate at that time to the state convention, but it, right now, the plans are to go back to having an in-person state convention, the V S B A convention, and I need to, I need the board to choose a delegate for the delegate assembly and an alternate for that day.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that, as in the past, the chairman, which would be you, be our delegate, with the alternate being our vice chair, which would be Bill.
I respectfully will have to decline. I got a phone call about two days ago from the, from the state president asking me to be on the credentials committee at the, at the delegate assembly, so we would need a couple of other, someone else to serve in that capacity.
Well, then I move, we ask Bill to serve in that position, where Sandy is...
I'm not going to be there either.
You're not going to be there?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do it with either you or Bob.
Why don't you make a motion then?
I'll make a motion then, that Bill be our representative and Mr. Spencer be the alternate.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion made that Mr. Sturgill be the delegate to the state convention, Mr. Spencer be the alternate. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Haven't been first and seconded. Any discussion about that? Hearing no discussion, those in favor of approving Mr. Sturgill as a delegate, Mr. Spencer as the alternate to the state convention in November signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, then Mr. Sturgill and Mr. Spencer will serve in those capacities at the, as our delegates to the state convention.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As a matter of courtesy, we have a state senator here, and I think we ought to move him, give him the opportunity to make comments.
We will. It's only seven, it's only seven minutes away from our public comment time, and I believe he'll, I believe he will. No disrespect to the, to Mr. Carrico. Let's see, next is the approval, approval of superintendent's travel, and that's actually an item, I believe, for me. Excuse me. And fall athletic schedule, Mr. Questionberry?
Mr. Questionberry is at a conference, but you have in your package the fall athletic schedules, and they're there for you to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the fall athletic schedules as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to approve those schedules. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, fall athletic schedules are, excuse me, put that to a vote. Those in favor of approving the fall athletic schedules signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, the fall athletic schedules are approved.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a motion on who's approving the superintendent's travel?
I move that this chairman approves the superintendent's travel like we've always done.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so there's been a first and a second. Any discussion on that issue? Hearing no discussion, those in favor of allowing the chairman to continue to approve that travel signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, then that, that matter passes as well. I believe that was item C. Item E, C W C Schools and Pools Program, Ms. Motley?
Ms. Motley's on the third floor with the group up there.
Okay.
You do have in your packet the, you know, we've always done the fourth-grade Pools and Schools program, and where the Wellness Center graciously allows us to bring kids over for swimming lessons and to, you know, to learn pool safety rules, so...
That applies to fourth grade?
Fourth grade. Every fourth grader in the county will go.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the C W C Schools and Pools Program.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion first and seconded. Is there any discussion on that issue?
I believe it'd be nice if we could expand the swimming program from fourth grade to mini grades, and I don't know whether we can work that out, but we need to keep that in mind.
Okay. And I'll just add, I think that's one of the best, one of the best programs for our children's safety over these many years that, that we have. I've had many parents speak to me about how glad they are that we have that. So we have a motion first and seconded, no more discussion, those in favor of approving the Carroll Wellness Center Schools and Pools Program signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, that motion passes. And we might just squeak in, oh, we've already done item F, so...
No.
Oh, sorry, excuse me.
This is for the other policies that were in your package, the language changes and all that were in your package, and you had, you've had those for a month to look at.
Okay, everyone should have reviewed those. Do I have a motion concerning item F?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the policies as presented.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the policies presented under item F on the agenda? Hearing no, no more discussion, those in favor of approving item F, policy system for Carroll County Public Schools signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, item F is approved. And we'll, I think at this point, I'm going to go ahead and stop, and we'll get ready to, we'll move into our public comment time, which is usually at 6:00. Just a couple of things before we get, before we do get started. Again, I welcome all of you here tonight that plan to still speak. I think the actions already taken by the board impact a lot of what a lot of you came here about, but nevertheless, just be aware that, again, this is primarily, this is our business meeting of which you see. Public comment is, is to be directed to the board. It's not something where it's an exchange between the board and the public, not typically. Each speaker will have five minutes. It's not a time to argue with one another. It's not a time to quarrel or disagree. If you have comments to make, make them to, make them to the board, but you'll be given, you'll be given your time to speak. The time will be kept. Ms. Questionberry's going to do that, because I want to pay attention to what's being said. You'll get, you'll get a red light that should come on up here on the podium if you're up here speaking, when you have a minute left to, when you have a minute left to go. No one will be, you know, you'll speak, you'll speak once. We have a large crowd, so we have to be able to get through. You know, everybody that wants to speak, we want to let you speak. And so, so I appreciate that, but just, you know, please be courteous. I don't mind, it's not up to me. Everybody expects people come out because they're passionate about something. That's a great thing, that brings you out. But just be courteous and respectful, please, and, and we'll get, you know, we'll get through this in due course. We had two, I believe, two submissions that were submitted via email, and I'm going to ask the clerk, if there's no objection from the board, to go ahead and read those comments into, into the record right now.
So first is from Chrissy Gilmer. I cannot be present tonight and would like my thoughts to be heard, or at least a resolution that can help the current situation with the bathrooms. If you change the all-girls and all-boys bathrooms into some single-stall bathrooms that on the outside of them have a sign for male and a sign for female that lock, just a bathroom with a toilet and a sink, that would not be considered discrimination. Yes, there would have to be some reconstruction, but it'd be worth it for our children. I would even help with the cost. Our community and children have values as well as morals, and I believe the majority of the people here tonight do not want our children to be exposed to what they are pushing on our children. There are ways to get around this. We just have to think outside of the box and protect our children from this. Thank you. If anyone here would like to contact me, please feel free. Again, that was Chrissy Gilmer. Again, that was Chrissy Gilmer.
And I would just note for the record that we did, it looks like after my comments, we started our public comment at six o'clock. So, okay, go ahead and read the next one.
The second one is from Jacob Davis. Hello, my name is Jacob and I live in Hillsville. I received a phone call while at work today from Big Free Baptist. That phone call said how there was a meeting for the new transgender bathroom legislation and then continued to say this was a horrible path that our children are going on and how dangerous this path is, and I was honestly just disgusted with the hate in that phone call. This is not about boys going on girls' bathrooms. It's letting these children feel accepted for who they are and loved. Not only that, the most important part, feeling safe while at school. Not letting a child use a bathroom with their preferred pronoun is extremely ludicrous and harmful. Eighty-one point seven of trans adults have seriously contemplated suicide in their life and forty point four of these adults attempted to commit suicide. I don't know if any of you have experienced a suicide, but I hope and pray you never have to go through that tragic loss. I myself have suffered from severe depression and suicidal thoughts, but thankfully, I'm accepted by my family and am fortunate enough to have had counseling. Just for a second, put yourself in their shoes and think about how these beautiful individuals are treated on a daily basis. The world is already filled with so much hatred. Why do you want to keep adding to it? Why do you want to push someone to potentially have suicidal thoughts or even commit suicide because you don't want them to use the bathroom? Think about the kind of person that makes you, because at the end of the day, we are judged for what is on the inside, the true, deep-down thoughts and feelings you have.
Okay, thank you. All right, who's first on there? Sign up, please.
The first on the list is Curtis Christian.
Could I make a statement to that, that last letter?
No, ma'am, not until your time to speak, if you're signed up. Okay?
And I can just remind you to pull the mic down towards you so that you can be heard.
Madam Clerk, I assume you'll start the time when he starts to speak?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
I'm Curtis Christian, pastor, First Assembly of God in Galax. I'm not a public speaker, I'm just a preacher. And I'm here to express some concerns. It was very noisy back where I was standing, so I could hear very little of the proceedings, but I would like, is it okay if I just ask a couple of questions?
Well, we're not, we're, we don't, we're not responding. You can make comments. That's what this is, is comment time.
Okay. Well, I was unclear as to what the policy will be between the time the construction begins and completed, what will the policy be for bathrooms then?
The vote that was taken tonight is to continue to follow the policy that we've had in place over many years. We did not adopt any new policy tonight.
I could not hear that, so I apologize for having to ask.
No, sir, that's fine.
And you might want to re, you probably didn't hear this, but while construction, every bath, every store, every school has single-stall bathrooms available to the kids.
Okay. And the single-stall bathrooms, will they, when the doors open, will they come out into a common area, will they come out into a hallway, or?
Yes. Yeah, they're not, they don't open up into a, into a multiple user...
Okay.
If that's what your question is.
Okay, it is, it is. I want to commend you guys because you've made a very difficult decision. It's sad that those in charge of our government has put you in this position. And I just want to say I thank you for making the decision that you made.
We all have children.
Yeah. And I know you, you are concerned about the education of our children, or you wouldn't be board members. When you make a good decision, nobody ever says anything about it. But you make a bad decision and they chew every ear off and the nose and everything else. So I just want to say thank you on my behalf for what you've done. I am concerned about the future, the direction that we're taking as a nation, and I think if we are going to solve the problem, it has to begin at the local level. We can't depend on the state or the federal. It has to begin here in Board of Education meetings, in superintendent's meetings, supervisor's meeting, and I will be one of the first ones there to plead your case with our supervisors. And I want to thank you for that. It's easy for us, you know. I heard someone say one time, when they were discussing a situation that was no clear conclusion, he said, "Some of my friends are for it and some of my friends are against it, and I'm for my friends." And tonight, you all made a decision, you know, some are for it, some are against it, but I thank you for standing up and making a decision that probably will not be popular, especially in the press, but it will be good for our local area. So I appreciate that. I think, I really think it is a shame that we have come to this point in our, in our country where we have to deliberate a matter like this. I'm not here to preach, I'm not here to, to give you my ideas. I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm just committing to you my support behind you, and this could be the right step in the right direction for us to rally together. And is it a perfect decision? Of course not. But it, I think it's the best decision that we could come up, or you could come up with tonight. And I appreciate that very much and I want to thank you for it. I stand firm on the Word of God. I just was standing back there looking at our, the sign behind you, the plaque behind you, "In God We Trust," yet it seems so many of our decisions completely leave God out of it. And I want to thank you for considering the Word of God and God's plan for a young man and a young woman. And I think you've made the right decision tonight. I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
Chair, I, there's some...
As they say in legislature, I yield my time to the next speaker.
Yeah, we'll stick to five minutes. We've got to try to do this in order.
Radio or something.
I think they're watching it on their phones now in the hallway.
Because the feedback is...
They're watching the live stream.
Okay, who's, who's next?
Jennifer Gray.
Jennifer Gray.
Jennifer Gray.
Jennifer Gray, if there is a Jennifer Gray to speak, please come forward. Jennifer Gray.
She may be upstairs.
I'm calling right now. There she is.
Okay, she's upstairs in the interest of time. Who would be next? And we'll come back to her.
Barry Ashton.
Barry Ashton?
I think they...
Okay, is Barry Ashton here in this room? Barry Ashton, if there is a Barry Ashton to speak, please come forward. Well, we'll make sure, we'll call them again in just a moment. Like I say, I'm just trying to keep this rolling, folks. So Barry Ashton did not answer?
No, sir.
Okay.
There is a delay on the live feed upstairs, though, so they're, they're hearing what you guys say about seven or eight seconds.
And if they come, if they come, we'll, they'll get to speak. It's not a matter of, is that Mr. Ashton?
Mr. Ashton.
No. Okay, who's next, Ms. Questionberry?
Pastor Jeff.
Okay.
If they sign up to speak, you can have the signal bell.
Tonight, we come and, you know, I've been here for about five weeks and, and I've listened and, you know, I do admire a couple of you speaking to me after the last meeting, but most of you did not. You said things like, "I was told not to speak." Now, when you were elected on this board, you were to protect our children of this county and you were to speak and take behalf of that. And if anybody on here has told you not to speak, then that's the wrong thing because you're here to support this county and there are 600 and some people here tonight to show that we're not going to stand for the wrong kind of thing. And the thing that y'all proposed tonight, single-stall bathrooms, well, that fixes it, but that's, that's over $2 million that we could use to do other stuff with our kids. You know, you're, you're doing away with 98% of the kids when it's boy and girl. I mean, it's pretty simple. And, and we call it discriminating or whatever, but that's not what that is. But my, my church, I have canceled people that's been harmed by this, that's in your school system, and I'm having to try to tell them why these things are happening. And it's, it's messed them up mentally. And, and that one call-in thing about being mental suicidal, well, a lot of good people are getting that way because they're getting confused what's right or what's wrong. I mean, we're, it's like we're forgetting the 98% of the population and trying to take care of the two and cater to them. Now, I'm not here to cater to any, I want to, I want to help people. I want to help people on the right path, and that's biblical, male and female. And that's all he gives in the Bible and in God We Trust. I trust God's Word. It'll stand where nothing else will stand. And I'm not against any of you guys, and I appreciate each one of you has took a stand and trying to work this out to the best that y'all can without causing problems, but, but, you know, this is a lot of money and we got bathrooms that me and Billy and all of us went to. And you can say that times has changed, but the times has changed because we ain't taking a stand for what's right. Times are changing because we, all we got to do is stand on God's Word and do what's right and minister to the people that has, has a problem. Minister to the 2% instead of me has a pastor and these other pastors is going to have to deal with 97% of the church population kids that don't understand this. And we can take a stand and do what's right and, and, you know, you talk about being sued if you, if you don't adopt this. Well, what about if you get sued if you do adopt it by parents that are angry and public? All it takes is one person. One person and one parent is all it takes for a lawsuit. So there's more people against it than there are for it. So, you know, you got to weigh all these options out. And I'm here and I love this county, I love this town, and I'm here to help any of you and, and, you know, any of you could have reached out to me instead of me reaching out to you.
I did try to reach out to you. Did Terry Simone not tell you that I wanted to...
Terry Simone said you'd like to sit down and have coffee. Why, why did you not call me? He give you my number?
No, he didn't.
Well, you could have called me. I mean, I'm easy to find. But, but I've been here, I've showed up, I've expressed myself. And one meeting we had is, "I don't want to talk about it, Billy. You said you didn't want to talk about it at high school, but you would go have coffee." These meetings are for the public to hear what's going on so that we can do the right thing. And it's like you didn't want to talk about it in front of the people the other night, but you'd sit down and have coffee with us. Now, this is, this is our county.
Let, let me interject there. The Code of Virginia allows anyone to speak and says to us that we're not supposed to engage. I will come to your church and speak in front of a thousand people, but in this moment, the code tells me I'm not supposed to. Okay?
So we got a board...
I'm sworn in to follow the Code of Virginia.
So we got a board that, that you're here, but you can't speak. When I asked the question, people went, left this board meeting and went out and told other people and, and out in the hall that they could not talk because it's told to be quiet.
That's, that's not accurate.
Well, that's what was told and it's on each board right here.
As I stated, I will speak in front of a thousand of your congregation, folks, at your church. But the Code of Virginia explains how this meeting is supposed to function and it's not supposed to be a two-way conversation.
Right. Well, I understand that part.
Okay, if you understand that...
I understand that part, but I'm talking about when I'm, when I'm sitting here talking that no board is supposed to say anything. I mean, period.
We're not.
Well, why are you a board? I mean, if you're going to take, if you're going to take direction from Richmond, we just need one guy that's going to say Richmond said do this and this is what we're going to do. We don't need a board.
Okay.
And, and that's just the truth. Now, we got a church full of kids that go to Carroll County, okay? And I love every one of them and I love you guys, and I'm not here to create problems, but I'm here to stand on what's right. Boys go to boys, girls go to girls, take that money and do something for our county or our school system that we need.
Did we, first of all, did we have, did we have either of the people previously?
Jennifer Gray or the Ashtons? Okay, Doug Goode.
And first and foremost, I just want to let you all know that I do appreciate you all. I love each and every one of you all. You all get the task of making popular and unpopular decisions. With that being said, I do want you to know that I appreciate you all, but you all are probably going to think I'm a hateful person here in just a minute, but as I sit back and listen tonight, not adopting the, the law that the state was wanting you all to do, that's given the folks, the citizens of the county, that's kind of given them a feeling of a false victory. Because when they ask if we, if, so if y'all were opposed to the transgender act, you were not opposed to it, you were just opposed to the bathroom situation. You know, the best example I could think of right off the top of my head, over here at the county rec department, they weren't enough money in the budget to get ball bats to play church league softball. But you want the county to come up with 2.6 million to fix these bathrooms? We don't, we don't need, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. You know, we've always had boys bathrooms, we've always had girls bathrooms, and I just think it's, it's kind of reckless to ask the county to pay for this and cost, when it boils down to it, it ain't the county, it's these people that's standing around here tonight just paying for it. And, you know, there's, there's all, you know, we can't, we can't mistreat the transgenders, don't get me wrong, you know. They got to have a place to go to, I suppose, but it would be a lot simpler to take a fraction of that money and make a single-stall bathroom somewhere than to redo all the schools and the whole schools. Because as a board, y'all, y'all are businessmen, y'all are smart men, and it's not a smart move to try to redo all the schools and, and we're going to have to pay for it. And with that being said, I love you all and appreciate you, and I'm not against you, but I'm for the public. Appreciate it.
I believe we have the Ashtons now?
Who?
Ashtons.
Ashton, okay.
The Ashtons now, please.
Please, two more down.
Yep.
Are you Nick Ashton? All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
No problem. So my name's Nick Ashton. I'm sorry, I did not hear everything that went on, but it sounds like you guys are trying to make the best of a bad issue being pushed on you. But the only thing I have to say about this is God does not make mistakes. We are who we are, period. If people are confused in some way, the unisex bathroom is the way to go, a single bathroom, and I hope that's the way we go. But that should not be pushed on our children. I'm very upset that my child had to fill out a form asking if he, how they, she identifies. No input from the parents. You call the superintendent, they ask you, they tell, they told me that if a parent was to have a problem with it, it's, it's trouble for the parent. You can't, you can't fight them on it. Teacher can't say, say nothing against it. It's up to these kids that are blinded by media and social media and brainwashed by all this junk that they see. They don't know no better. They're kids. You're putting a decision on kids when they don't know nothing about nothing yet. And it's just, it's, it's a shame. It's unfortunate, and I hate it being put on you all. And I, I feel like you guys are, like I said, trying to handle the best, trying to handle it the best you can, but it's, it don't make it okay. And I don't think it should be forced down to us. And I probably speak for several people around here that do not want their kids to be nervous to go to the bathroom, to be scared.
That's right.
I was straightly told I will not go to the bathroom by my daughter. And that's not no way to live, that's not no way to be in a public school environment. You're there to learn. I know there's separation between church and state, that's just the way it is, but we're God-fearing people, we love the Lord, he don't make mistakes, and that's, that's pretty much the start to the end of it. That's all I can say. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mary Ashton?
Mary Ashton? All right, if not... Mary Ashton has declined, I'm sorry. Okay?
Jennifer Gray? Tammy Pickett?
I think my husband said everything that we feel.
Okay.
Bill Carrico?
Good morning, gentlemen. Look, I feel like, yeah, I feel like it's morning. dealt with many of you on many different occasions. I, uh, had a conversation with Senator Bill Stanley who does represent Carroll County, and because of commitments and the fact that they're going back into session on the second of August, he couldn't be here, so I am here in his stead. Uh, there's some very concerning things, and I know you have an attorney on this panel that can tell you the same thing about section twenty-two, one dash twenty-three point three, which is a law that was passed in the General Assembly. And, uh, it sets the course for a lot of unnecessary lawsuits to be filed. First is the issue with bathrooms, locker rooms of the choice that you feel like you are the day after day after day. This all came about in 2016 under the Obama administration with the threats of taking away Title IX funding. And in none, under those threats, he was pushing to have these type of policies implemented all across the United States. That is when I, uh, began working with the Alliance Defending Freedom because I had a daughter that was in Grayson County School at the time. And I wanted them to adopt a policy in which it prevented my daughter from being in a bathroom with a male that's confused about their gender. Therefore, that policy was adopted. And that policy was adopted in many school divisions after that date. We're here today because of an administration that is not listening to the people of this country. The fact that the issue is making the way through its courts in every state. And as a legislator, the first thing I was taught when I was legislating is not to legislate when something's being litigated. And this is what the General Assem- Assembly has done to you. Therefore, the fact that this bill is highly contentious and it was done under the cover of darkness during a pandemic year should tell you something. It should tell you that they do not have your best interest, the school division or the people's best interest in, in their hearts when they did this because they cut off debate and they cut off the properly vetting of a bill. The law, in my opinion, is unclear. In section B of this law, it says every school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with, with, but may be more comprehensive than the model policy. Does this mean that you pick two out? Policies doesn't, it hasn't specified the seven that's in there. Do you pick two out and are you covered under the law? I'm not an attorney, but I've been around law a lo- long time, and I believe you could pick two and you could be fine. There's a huge issue with withholding information from parents about the student. When did the state become the parental guardian of my child and take control of my child when I edu-, I pay to educate them, I pay to feed them, I paid to house them, raise them? It's not the state. I'm not preaching to you guys because you did the right thing. I'm preaching to the General Assembly. Parental rights will be challenged under this bill. Last is the ability to allow students to room together overnight of the opposite sex at school-sponsored events. All you're doing through all these policies, all they are doing through all these policies is setting up lawsuits to be filed against school divisions, and nowhere in this law, nowhere in this law, does it say the state will defend you if that child is assaulted. Because the state is not gonna be your defender through this process. The civil suits will be filed and the taxpayers will pay the cost. You have a law that is, that is a tremendous unfunded mandate, and that unfunded mandate now needs to be put back in the state's hands, and the state needs, the state needs to continue to look at this law and buy-
Just turn that off then, for this speaker. Let that be over.
Can I have just two more minutes?
Yes, you can.
This law is a huge unfunded mandate. This law should've never been passed without funding sources to build these bathrooms. This should not be on the people of this county. This should be on the state taxpayers. They're the ones that forced you to do it. I served for eight years on Senate Finance. Every time that something came down that said it was gonna be passed on to the locality, you better find the money or we weren't gonna pass it down. Today, they passed a massive unfunded mandate on this county and on these people. Common sense approaches can be taken to fix this problem, to address this problem. I feel you've done your part in trying to address it with single stall bathrooms that are not in common areas. A couple of last things I would just add. If the state truly believed in equality, why do well-funded school systems in northern Virginia get more than the children in this area? If they truly believed, if they truly believed that this was a equality issue, why did they so many years reject homeschool students from playing scholastic sports? If they truly believed that this was the right thing to do, why didn't they mandate the teachers and the staff to do the same thing, to use common use bathrooms? Those are things that they did not debate. Those are the things that they left hung around your neck, and I appreciate what you've done tonight. Our nation was built by men of character, and you've shown your character by rejecting the state's model policies. We, for centuries, taught biblical principles and character in our schools, and we deviated from it in nineteen sixty-three. Corinthians fifteen three, thirty-three says, "Don't do not be misled. Bad company corrupts good character." Don't be in the company of the state, which causes they are gonna give you bad charac- character. Ben Franklin said, "It takes many good deeds to build a reputation, but only one bad deed to lose it." Adrian Rogers said, "When a nation loses its character, it loses its liberties." The, you've been strong men of character, and I appreciate what you've done. Not knowing what you were gonna do when I came here, I appreciate what you've done to resist the policy. And because of the growing number of counties across this state that are standing up and saying no, you're forcing it back into the General Assembly's hands. Now, not doing this for notoriety, but I'm not a resident of Grace, oh, Carroll County, I am of Grayson, but I've had the privilege and the honor of representing some of the best people in the world. And I know this is an unfunded mandate from the state. My wife and my family and I are gonna make this five hundred dollar contribution to your county, just to show you, I truly believe that protecting our children, as a trooper I protected them, as a legislator I protected them, protecting them is the most important thing you'll do for the future of this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Ask him if Bill Stanley had anything that he was doing to help us with this, do you mind? Since he brought up Bill Stanley.
No, ask him to go, that's fine.
Bill, do you mind?
Okay, I'll answer questions.
Well, this is highly unusual and, and it's out of character, but you mentioned our state Senator Bill Stanley. Did he say what he was doing on the state level to help us? Cause we're like the tail of the dog, and he's like the teeth.
Yeah.
So what is, what is that end? What is he doing?
So, as, as they prepare for the session that will be approaching in two thousand and twenty-two, they're looking at this law and the mandates in which are being sent down to localities and the rejection of these mandates and the fact that there's so many things in this law and in these model policies that violates rights to privacy. As Pastor Pickett said, you know, you've got some polls that show six tenths of the population are transgender or homosexual. You have some polls that show if you're born in nineteen eighty and above, it's four point five percent. So the average would be two percent of the population that may be transgender or confused as to what their gender is. And so therefore, you're, you're creating a mandate on ninety-eight percent of the, the people, and you're creating a mandate in which it violates the privacy rights of those ninety-eight percent. And so, so what they're gonna be looking at is this law specifically, and they're gonna be looking at the constitutionality of it. And if you don't, if you haven't noticed, I think there's eight counties right now that has rejected this across the state, and there are gonna be more than that. Uh, there is a law firm currently working to represent those that have rejected this policy, and they're working because of the unconstitutional issues. I don't wanna speak for Bill as to introducing legislation, but I will say that I have a good feeling that they're gonna come back with a counter, uh, bill that will fix what law was passed, and it will give the people the right to stand and to speak against, for, and not be done in the cover of darkness. Um, I know that elections have consequences, and we're seeing those consequences. I'm a Republican, red-blooded, flag-waving, true patriot American. Alan, we want a two-party system, and I learned I have to give and take, but you can't give on this one. This one jeopardizes too many's, too many people's constitutional rights. And I think that you're gonna find that the, the other side is gonna start realizing how bad this law actually was. And hopefully, by the time they go back into session, they will have, I'm gonna get political here, we'll have a Republican governor that'll veto it, and we have-
Amen.
-a new House and Senate. But that's the problem with a one-party control, is when you have total control, you do whatever you want, whether the people want it or not. And so I think you're gonna see a lot of people standing up through this election to say, what you're forcing down our throat is not right.
That's right.
And we've got to make that change. Senator Stanley actually would've loved to have been here, but in preparation, he had other commitments and couldn't be here, and I hate to speak on his behalf, but we can, we discuss all the flaws in this bill, and that's the reason I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Questionberry, who's next?
Ron Hodges.
Who?
Ron Hodges.
Okay.
And if I can caution everybody, the mics are not working.
Okay. Well, I'm very dissatisfied with y'all guys up here. You know, it's a filter behind closed doors that's passed down to y'all, and y'all like puppets on string. Carroll County, we're better than this. Amen. We have, we have a decision to make here tonight. We pulled our kids out of the schoolhouse. That's what needs to be done. Because I, I had three kids that came to Carroll County, I supported, I, I can't believe we're here in this county right now with this problem. It's two bathrooms. When I grew up, and you know to go on the boys, and you know to go on the girl, you went to the girls. And I, I just can't believe what I'm hearing in all this, and I, you know, we, we're better than this, people. Y'all owe us, y'all owe us better than this. You're, you're, if you're standing up for our kids, and just like I say, you taking one or two, I'm not here to judge people. I'm not gonna judge you, cause God tells us we're judged by the fruit that we bear, okay? I'm not judging anybody. I'm not here to bully, I'm not here to bash, I'm just stating my opinion. Uh, our kids deserve better than this.
That's right.
And I, I'm, I support Carroll County and everything. I've been a resident for thirty-some years. I came out of Ivanhoe, Virginia, and I was in With County. They're fighting the same thing over there tonight, and I hope they have a good turnout too. But, you know, people, this can't be, you can't, it's, it's just like you take one or two people, and it don't matter what, say five hundred, thousand more likes, you, you make a decision on two people or a couple or handful. That's not right, people. We're the people of Carroll County, we deserve better.
That's right.
We got rights, our kids got rights. And if you got respect and moles, and if you read that Bible, I'm not a preacher, but I know that Bible, I read it. If you read into that Bible, God tells me, I'm not, I'm not on a money trail. I can't be bought, I can be had, but I can't be bought. Okay? I'm not one of those puppets on a string. And you're lining your pockets and you're losing, you know, I'm looking at, y'all the ones making the decision, it might be handed down to you, but you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be accountable for what decision you make, in God's eyes.
That's right, that's right.
But come on, people, let's do what's right for our kids. They are our future.
That's right.
And you know, I, I wanna, I'm gonna stand up, I'm gonna stand up for God, and I, you know, there's people out here that they wanna get up here and speak, they don't, they don't want to, but they, they understand. We're going in the wrong direction, people. It's not working. Back in the day when I grew up, we had Bible school teachers that came to our school, and we were so, we was glad to see them, you know? I, I learned a lot from them when, highly respectable. And when you got out of hand, they tucked you up, pulled you up in front of the classroom, busted your butt, hurt your feelings, and sent you back home. That's the world. But this one out of the schoolhouse, we had to have resources, horses in here. You know, that's, hey, people, what's wrong? It's not working. Look at the people out here. And I would like to say, you know, when, when stuff like this comes up, why go in the closed room? Why not invite the public? And let's get in a big auditorium somewhere and sit down and discuss the problem? Why go ahead and make the decision? We're not happy with this. And like I say, all three of my kids went to school over here, and I loved it, I supported them, everything in it, but if all this passes, I will not support nothing else Carroll County has, or anything, so, I will not support random. And I hope people does the same thing. Boy, pot.
That's right.
Stand up for your child, they deserve better. And the potential, the opportunity to be involved with your kids.
That's right.
That's all I gotta say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next? Ms. Questionberry.
Teresa Cochran? Teresa Cochran? Then Julie Bowers?
Yeah, um, is, I was gonna tell them to have Julie Bowers on standby.
We're, we're doing it.
Oh, you're doing it? Okay, all right. Go ahead, Ms. Cochran.
Yes, I would like to say, I'm not a speaker or nothing, I'm just a reverend person, and I've lived here all my life, I was born and raised here, and I can't believe before I'm here. When I have to be standing here to say what I gotta say, God help us all, we better be praying, cause this is not right, and God will help us all, not just one, he will hold us all accountable for what's going on. And then don't think it's gonna get better, people, it's gonna get worse.
That's right.
Next thing we're gonna be up here for is CRT to be taught. You better hope and pray to God it doesn't come, cause we're coming when it does.
That's right.
And I pray for all of us, including y'all. Y'all have to make decisions. Thank God I don't have to do that. But I do pray for you, and I pray for us, I pray for our kids especially. This is the thing that's going to affect them more than any of us.
That's right.
And we all have kids- Teresa Cochran. Then Julie Bowers.
Yeah, um, I was going to tell them to have Julie Bowers on standby.
We're doing it.
Oh, you're doing it? Okay. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Cochran.
Yes, I would like to say, I'm not a speaker or nothing, I'm just a reverend person. And I've lived here all my life. I was born and raised here, and I can't believe before I'm here. When I have to be standing here saying what I've got to say, God help us all, we better be praying, because this is not right, and God will help us all, not just one. He will hold us all accountable for what's going on. And then don't think it's going to get better, people. It's going to get worse.
That's right.
Next thing we're going to be up here for is CRT to be taught. You better hope and pray to God it doesn't come, because we're coming when it does. And I pray for all of us, including y'all. Y'all have to make decisions. Thank God I don't have to do that. But I do pray for you, and I pray for us, I pray for our kids especially. This is the thing that's going to affect them more than any of us.
That's right.
And we all have kids. I don't have no kids at school, but I have grandbabies, and they're just another mile. And when you start to harm one of them, you better be harming me.
That's right.
And I love my kids, and I love our kids. We need to stand together and pray together. And if you don't know the Lord, I pray you do know him. You get to know him, because this is what it's going to take to get us through all this, is the good Lord and our faith. And you better stand on it, because if you don't, God is waiting. And I pray for our soul. And I, I agree with Mr. Preacher Pickett. I was waiting for him to get up, because I'd love to hear him.
That's right.
But I believe what he says, and I stand with him. And anyone that's with him is, I'm with them all together. We've got to stand together.
Who's next?
Julie Bowers.
There's too late now. First of all, I want to thank y'all for opening this meeting up in prayer and respecting the flag. And that means a whole lot to stay in town. And I do stand for Brother Jeff and Brother Bill that just left here. I'm full of agreement that a boy's a boy, a girl's a girl. We have a boys bathroom, and we have a girls bathroom.
That's right.
And it's worked all these years. We've had no problem.
That's right.
But if y'all feel the need to turn one of those bathrooms into a bathroom to suit these friends, because I do not discriminate towards anybody. I love anybody, especially children. I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with all this money that y'all have in mind, that y'all want to spend on this stuff, that can go to educate our children.
That's right.
That's why I want to do better teachers, and then train something for our children to learn, not throw this out. Really think about it. Have some common sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. I initially came here to talk about something else, and y'all rolled different than maybe most of the folks that were in the parking lot were thinking. We were going to go. I changed what I was going to say to this. I realize you're in a tough spot. A lot of us realize you're in a tough spot. You, you didn't sign up knowing that this was going to be something that you were going to vote on in your lifetime. You, you're not equipped for this. You're not equipped to handle the repercussions of this. You can't predict what'll happen, what's going to happen next. You're, you're not trained. Nobody's a specialist dealing with this experimentation with our population. Nobody's a professional that deals, whether you're a sociologist, psychologist, you, nobody's equipped to deal with the repercussions. Nobody knows what the repercussions are going to be. What I will say is this, I believe you guys have done tonight what you believe is best. You did, you did make a move in the right direction. And I just want to say, we're praying for you. And, and we realize it's difficult where you're sitting, and it may be difficult, but man, men, stand your ground. Stand your ground. Do your research. Study sociology if you want to study sociology. There's not anything in the notebook about this. Study psychology if you want to. There's not anything in the notebook about this. Study, study up, study hard, but study God's Word. Study God's Word. Listen, listen. What we're seeing is the fumes, we're seeing the, the broken relationship in our nation that, that is because we are dislocated from God. We're dislocated from God. And that's why you see, that's why you see this country beginning to, to come unhinged. This isn't a political statement. You know, many people say, I'm of this party or that party. Listen, every party needs God. Every person needs Jesus Christ. Every man, woman, boy and girl need the gospel of Christ. If they're alive, they need Jesus. If they're alive, they need Jesus. So what I want to say to you guys is, you're not, you're not beholden to the people as much as you are to hold them to God. You are. And because you're beholden, holding to God, then you're, you're going to, you're going to want to serve the people. You're going to want to serve the people. And so what I would say tonight is, we're praying for you. And we're praying for our children. I've got five children, and I, I'm here to represent them, our church family, this county. We moved to this county seven years ago from Santa Barbara, California. And we're proud to be a part of Carroll County. We are. And we love our kids, we love our citizens, we pay our taxes, and we want to see God glorified in this county.
That's right.
I know a lot of your faces. I went to Carroll County. I have two children out of Carroll County. I have lots of family that most of you know. I'm here, basically, we all want the same thing. We all are here for our kids, whether your kid be on the side that decided tonight not to adopt this, or on the other side. I think in the end, it is keeping every child safe, comfortable, whatever that may be that we need to do, but not inflicting the rights of the children. My child has told me, Mom, don't go over there. Don't want you saying anything. People know you. I'm the only one who will stand up for her.
Amen.
So she told me that, she's like, don't go over there, Mom, you know? People are going to know you, and then they're going to tell so-and-so, and I just won't use the bathroom at school. Well, guess what? Not acceptable.
That's right.
Every child, and I do say every, and I mean that wholeheartedly, deserves to be at school, feel safe, not be bullied, go to the bathroom when they want to, feel comfortable in the bathroom, play sports, learn. The main focus is to get our kids to school, teach them, take care of them while they're there, give them a good, safe environment, and get them home safely. I don't feel like it's, I feel like you guys get thrown a lot of things that aren't really your responsibility. A lot of things, this world throws on people to raise our children, that isn't your responsibility. It's ours.
Yep.
I teach my child at home, and right now, I'm really struggling. I have one in college. It's not a good thing. They've turned her, they've turned her away from her mother. But our social media, our entire nation teaches our children things that aren't right. And the main thing is for us to teach them before they get to school, so they have a good background, a good foundation when they get there. But I really do thank you guys for the decision you did make. I will say, I've been in several schools in the county, high school, label, you know, all through coming up. I've been through all the schools since they've been remodeled. I do believe there are other ways without remodeling all the schools that may possibly be an option. And I, I would ask you guys to actually look at that. I know some of the schools have, right now, I guess they're unisex or family bathrooms that may be able to save some money that way. But I can tell you that I'm pretty sure all the people here, whatever it takes, whether it takes, you know, I'm sure taxes have to be raised, whatever, we're all behind you in making the right decision. And we're all, you know, we're all here to support those decisions. I know nobody likes to spend money, but if it has to be spent, if my child gets to school safely, feels comfortable, gets tall, and back home to me, that's what I want. So I thank you guys for what you did do tonight. And I personally will be praying for all of you, including our children, because we want them at school tall and safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, just, Tammy, Dr. Burnett had a, had a comment.
Ms. Carrico brought up a good point. We do have single-user bathrooms in every single one of our schools. And that, that is, we do have those. Do we have a lot of them? No, but we do have them. And we have enough for any, anyone who wants to use it, regardless.
Does it take care of the 2%?
No. We, anyone who wants to use, you know, I, I'll speak for myself. I didn't like going to the bathroom in, in the school, you know, in a single-stall, in a big, big bathroom with no stall doors. So we do have those single-stall bathrooms that anybody can use.
Will they accommodate the 2% so we don't have to spend that 2.1 million?
They will accommodate all kids.
Here's, here's the problem.
Well, you're good. Like I say, they will accommodate all kids, but there's few of them. Okay? There's not, we don't have 20 single-stall bathrooms.
We've all had to wait, buddy.
And we all need 20 single-stall bathrooms.
Even construction on a few more would be better than remodeling bathrooms throughout the schools.
I mean, think about it from this perspective. There's nothing in Carroll County for our kids to do. Why not put that $2 million to a water park or a splash pad so we don't have to drive to Boston to take our kids to have some leisure fun?
This, this is, this is, this, I, I, I'm, I'm, we have enough single-stall, but here's the, here's what the Supreme Court has said just three weeks ago. You cannot take that transgender student and say, your bathroom is a single-stall bathroom, and then a boys is a boys and a girls is a girls. That transgender student can decide on their own, and this is not me, don't kill me, don't hit the messenger. I don't like this. I have a daughter that's at high school. I'm just telling you, we checked into, can we use the single-stalls we have? Yes, we can. But if that transgender person wants to use a different bathroom of their choice, the Supreme Court twice has now said, we have to. So that's why our board in discussion said, make everyone a single-stall bathroom. The hell with this, pardon my French. I don't know the solution, and I hope Bill Stanley, the county did get some COVID money, and it's free, and it can handle remodeling.
That's right. We all pay it.
Well, we did. No, I'm, but I'm just saying, it was a federal thing, so it's not going to be, it's already given to them. So why don't we, while we have that influx of that money, put it towards that. But I'm not for any of this. I'm just saying, we tried that. We can make that, you know, available.
We're discussing this so that transgender children can be comfortable in school? When Carroll County schools have been rampant with bullying for 20 years, and nothing has been done about it, and kids suffer every day with being bullied, and nobody, my kids go to Carroll County. My daughter just graduated, my son graduated six years ago, and I got a son that's going into seventh grade in Carroll County right now. And they, and they've all dealt with some bullying. My sons have had to stand up for themselves, my daughters have to stand up for herself. And when, and because, and the reason why they had to stand up for themselves is because when, when they turned them in and told the teachers about it, zips was done. Nothing. I know plenty of people that go to Carroll County.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to address your question. And this is why we're not really supposed to, because we're getting off topic. So I apologize to the chair, and if we can go back to the next person. But that's why we're looking at that. The State Supreme Court.
Thank you, Mr. Poe.
Well, it used to be of the people, by the people, and for the people. We know, we all know, all of us in this room, everybody knows, you guys know, it's of the government, for the government, and by the government. This is where, this is where the people stand up finally after allowing prayer being taken out of school. That's the Christian's fault. That's our fault. It's 63 because we said nothing. But we're talking now, and we're going to keep on talking, and we're going to be nice, we're going to be godly toward people. And, but we're going to make sure policy is changed. And I, I grieve over our state, the mess it's in, from the state house all the way through the, it, it's a mess, just a big mess. And we all know it is. And hope to God it changes. So, but I wanted to say a couple of things here that, that's important to me, that I feel like some, somebody I think said earlier about the separation of church and state. Well, that's not in the Constitution.
That's right.
And I, we hear it all the time. It's in the Constitution. No, it's not. And I'm just going, I want to read a couple of things to you. First Amendment, Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. Thomas Jefferson was not one of those 90 men who framed the First Amendment, and during those debates, not one of those 90 framers ever mentioned the phrase, separation of church and state. It seems logical that if this had been the intent for the First Amendment, as is so frequently asserted, then at least one of those 90 would have framed the First Amendment, would have mentioned the phrase, but none of them did. And that's in congressional records from June 7th to September 25th, 1789. And then, this is what it was, it was one man's private letter, y'all probably know this, but it was one man's private letter taken out of context. The earlier courts had always viewed Jefferson's letter to the Danbury Baptist Association for just what it was, a personal, private letter to a specific group. There's probably no other instance in America, in American history, where words spoken by a single individual in a private letter, words clearly taken out of context, have become the sole authorization of a national policy. We need to always remind people, there is no separate, the, the whole idea of him saying that was to keep the state out of the church's business, but never the church out of the state. And look at the mess we're in today, in our state and in our federal government. We're in a mess. And we all know that the only answer here has got to be a revival, a mighty move of God in our families. And I pastor a clinku Church of God, and I have a lot of young kids in our church, and I grieve for those kids to have to go through this kind of stuff. I'm so glad my mom and dad is in heaven today, because I don't know what they would think of how crazy our world has become with all this stuff. And why now? Why in this time in life that we have these issues like this? Now, I want to read a couple of other things, and I'll be finished here. Man, my time is not right. Okay. The transgender movement has greatly energized when the American Psychiatric Association, APA, in its 2013 revised edition of the Diagnosis of Statistical Manual of Psychiatric Disorders, DSM-5, delisted gender identity disorder as psychiatric, as a psychiatric disorder, reclassifying it as gender dysphoria. Why? Pressure, political pressure.
That's right.
Just like all these other rules have been changed, political pressure. Now, listen, I want to say this. I understand how much pressure you're under. We're all under pressure. As a pastor, I'm under pressure every week either to preach the word or not, either, either to change something. I can't change what is eternal, and I'm not going to. And we all will give an account. I want to read this, and then I'm done. Psalms 139:14 says, "I will praise you for I am fearfully and wonderfully made; marvelous are your works, and that my soul knows very well." All males have X and Y chromosomes, we do, and all females have XX. You can't change that. You can do surgeries, you can do all kinds of stuff, but a man is a man, is a man.
Amen.
And a woman is a woman, is a woman. Amen? And that's the way God made us, that's the way we should be. Romans 14, verses 11 and 12. "For it is written, as I live, says the Lord, 'Every knee shall bow to me; every knee shall bow.'" All the governments' knees is going to bow, everybody in government, their knees is going to bow, everybody will bow, and every tongue shall confess to God. So then each of us shall give an account of ourselves. We're all going to give an account. And I want to thank you that I feel like today that you get a good check beside your name.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all for letting me share my opinion on, on what's going on. I grew up in Carroll County, lived here all my life. I was in the first class that went to the New Carroll County High School in 1969 when it was built. And I still, I, I son went to Carroll County, and I don't have any children or grandchildren in school right now, but I do have nieces and nephews. And I do have a big, big church family. And I consider my church kids my kids, and I'm here to stand up for them. God created a man and a woman. There is no such thing as a transgender. There cannot be. I don't care how many surgeries you have. There cannot be, I don't care how many surgeries you have, how many drugs you take, you cannot change your DNA, your chromosomes. The only thing is an intersexual person, which most of them have the XX chromosomes, which is female, but that also have an extra Y chromosome, and they're born this way with both genitalia. Majority of them opt to be female, but that is the only thing. There, there's not transgender, there's, there's no such thing. And this about going in, having to go into a girl's bathroom, it, it, it frightens me, it disgusts me. If my little four-year-old niece was in the bathroom and a boy comes in, just because that guy, he decides he's a girl, can you imagine how traumatized that little four-year-old girl's gonna be? She's not gonna understand why this girl is different than her. And I think there should be a way that this bathroom problem can be resolved without it costing over $2.5 million.
That's right.
And I don't understand why they feel that they would be discriminated against because they couldn't go into a boy's or a girl's bathroom. What about the majority? Wouldn't they be discriminated against? I mean, it used to be majority rule. You did what was good for the many.
That's right.
And I just hope and pray that this gets resolved. I, as a Christian, am sick and tired of the government telling us how we should raise our children, our grandchildren, our adopted children. They have too much control now as it is. The decision should be made by the parents. It shouldn't be a government thing, if, no matter where it comes from, if it's the governor of Virginia, or if it's the Senate, the Supreme Court, or the President of the United States. Our children do not belong to them. I'm tired of their policies being imposed on us when it is wrong. They have no common sense, no morals. And, I mean, you can look at, you can look at a boy, know it's a boy, you look at a girl, know it's a girl. And if these transgenders are so confused, then they need to go to church, and they, they need a parent that has some common sense, and has some moral, and some godliness here, to straighten them out. Not say, "Well, honey, that's okay, that's okay." That's all I have to say about it. I just hope and pray that you all will make the right decisions. Before, we don't have to worry about public schools anymore. Everybody will be pulling their kids out in either homeschooling, private school, or a religious school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, Tammy, before we go on, is there a way to kill this?
Turn the mics off.
Yeah, just turn them off. I mean, they're not, I don't think they're...
We're doing pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah, you're doing good.
I'm sorry, who was next?
I haven't started yet. Oh, no, that's, we're done now. Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna keep this very short and brief. I'm retired military, and I swore upon an oath before the Constitution to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. So help me God, you members of the board, you basically took the very same oath, and when you go to make a vote, I just want you to keep it in mind that the Constitution is based on the King James Bible, and just take that into serious consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good to see all y'all, especially you all. Coach Mark.
I raised, I raised that boy, he was barefooted and, and didn't have a shirt on when he came to school, and, and look at him now, he's like a genius.
And I hide what I needed to, there's no doubt about it. Well, folks, I want, I want to say this, most of everything I was gonna say has already been covered here tonight, really has. I think it's a shame that we're all here tonight for this, I really do, and I think most of y'all think the same way, I really do believe that. And I do understand that y'all have got a very tough job, you really do. But 2.16 million dollars? You know, is that what it was?
2.1.
Deal bathrooms? I mean, come on, that's, that's, that's pretty ridiculous, I would think. You know, when, when the popular, it doesn't support that, not that much money. Now, if you've got money, if you've got COVID money, and that's where it's gonna go, I guess that's bound, it's not coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, but somewhere it is. Somewhere it is, nothing's free, there's nothing free. I'm not, I'm not gonna stand up here and just keep beating on a dead horse. All I will say is that nothing's gonna change, no, nothing's gonna change, we all hit our needs. That's what we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to talk hard, we're gonna have to change it. We have all stood around and let it get to this point. I'm standing up here talking about boys and girls going to the bathroom, that's the dumbest thing I've ever seen. Come on, you guys, hit your knees and talk to God about this. Y'all do the same thing.
Second Chronicles 7:14.
Sir?
Second Chronicles 7:14.
Mr. Bush, Mary.
Darrell, I'm glad you married a good woman.
That's the only thing keeps me going.
Yeah, you brave boy.
Go ahead. Thank you all for letting me speak. I've never even been to a meeting before, I've never felt like I needed to as much as I do now. And I wrote some stuff down, and, but I, I want to start off by saying, it seems like as a conjure, if you say anything against someone, suddenly you hate that group, or you hate those people. I don't have any hate in my heart for anyone, that's not what this is about. But I read further into what was on the Virginia Department of Education site, and one of the things that I saw that bothered me the most, if I read it correctly, was that this will put in the hands of the school system, if, if my child or one of our children feels that they may be transgender or has questions, that the school system doesn't have to tell me as the parent. And I have rights as a parent.
That's right.
To make decisions for my child's healthcare, for their medical needs, religious education, and how am I supposed to do that, how am I supposed to do my job as a parent if the, this law doesn't allow the school to tell me what's going on with my child, if, if they don't tell me? Then I'm, I'm an eight ball already, and, and I did do some research. And I've worked in counseling most of my adult life, and there is a higher suicide rate for people who are transgender. And again, I'm not coming out of place from hate about this, but I think parents have a right to know what's going on with their children. Our children can't vote, buy tobacco, or join the military until they're 18, and they can't drive until they're 16. But now, it feels like it's being said that they can decide to change their gender at age 8 if they want, and that, that terrifies me. And I don't envy the position y'all are in, I know you're doing the best you can with what you've been handed, but, you know, and I, I do have concerns about the bathrooms and being able to have, go on after-school overnight trips, and you can stay in whatever room, to me, that just increases your risk of sexual assaults, all kinds of things that could happen. And I'm not saying this would come from transgender people. This could be a guy who is gonna take this opportunity, or a woman who's gonna take this opportunity and say, "Well, I thought to go ahead to go, so now I'm gonna take it a step further and, you know, do something that's like being a pedophile or, or something." And I don't want my children going through that. I don't want to have to explain to my aides and six-year-olds this kind of stuff. They're children, and they need to be allowed to be children and not have this kind of stuff. Because I can assure you, my eight-year-old will ask me, "What does all of this mean? And how am I supposed to explain that?" But thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks.
Starr Anderson?
Starr Anderson? Go ahead and call the next name and put her, if she is upstairs.
Grace Patterson?
What's that name again?
Grace Patterson or Starr Anderson?
Okay, who's, who's next?
Oh, we got...
Wait a minute, hold on.
Are you Starr or Grace?
Starr Anderson.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate that everybody has come to espouse their views. This is democracy, however, these laws are laws. And I hope that the school board does the best they can with that. The reason I'm here is because I have several nieces and nephews in this school system. I want them to see that we don't bully, we don't inhibit another person's existence. We include them, and we provide equity for a safe and supportive educational experience in the K-12 realm. I want my nieces and nephews to know that basic human decency is still alive and well. I want us all to remember, as several of us follow Christ teachings, love thy neighbor. We may not agree, but love thy neighbor. I would also like to throw some information at you. I want to thank the members of the Pulaski County Chapter of Glisten, the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network. They're an organization in schools to ensure an environment that is conducive to learning and inclusive of people who are not heteronormative. These children need to know that just because they're in a minority doesn't mean they should be at risk with their education. I spent all of my time here since 5/15 searching for cases where sexual assault is perpetrated by transgender people in public restaurants in educational systems. I searched through hundreds of statistical abstracts and did not find anything to support that because it is a red herring. What I did find is that 70% of transgender people have been verbally assaulted in named-gendered bathrooms that they are forced to use. 10% have been physically assaulted. That's not okay. If one of my nieces or nephews was transgendered and had to face the fear of using a bathroom because of being assaulted by someone who's heteronormative, I'd probably lose my mind. No child should have to do that. Children are more at risk from predators in their churches and homes than by transgendered students. Just saying. So if, I'll tell you what, if you can find statistics about transgender perpetrators in public school bathrooms, email me, L-I-V-M-R-D-U-X at yahoo.com. I would love to see your statistics. In the meanwhile, love thy neighbor, trans rights are human rights.
There they go, Jordan, that's their loving class.
Okay, folks, listen, 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 listen. We are going to have a meeting, and everybody has a right to speak. You don't have to like what they say, sir, you don't have to like what they say, and, and they don't have to like what you say. So you give them their time like you get... No.
That's what he's saying, he wants me to leave.
If he interrupts, he interrupts again, if you interrupt again, we actually leave.
All I'm saying is, everyone has the right to speak, that's what this is, that's what this is for. Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Grace Patterson, and I was a graduate of Carroll County High School in 2018. Sorry if I get a little shaky, and I'll speak a long. Now, we're fully aware why we're gathered here today. I know that all of us don't agree on this, there are many different generations filling this room today to speak out on trans bathrooms right through Carroll County schools. I know that some people in the older generations do not understand this, and that's why we are, that's why they are against this. I understand your religions, and I respect them, but there is a separation between church and state that we have to respect. Not everyone in this room or Carroll, not everyone in this room or Carroll County schools is a Christian, religious, straight, or cisgendered person. None of this is a matter of opinion, it is fighting for the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming youth. We have to understand that the world is changing around us constantly, and we have to become accustomed to the change. These are children and teenagers that we are fighting for the rights of today to use a bathroom. It's literally just a bathroom, why are we also upset about a bathroom? Unisix bathrooms have existed for years, we all use the same bathrooms at home, at work, many different places in our everyday lives. This is a matter of not wanting something to change because you don't understand it. Just because someone is trans or LGBT+ does not mean we cannot learn to understand them. The decision made today forever marks the stand that Carroll County Public Schools has for the Alliance for LGBT+ Students, specifically trans youth. Making children and teenagers more comfortable with who they are becoming and growing up to be is so important. Not allowing students to use the bathrooms they feel comfortable with is demeaning to a young person's confidence and self-identity. It breaks their trust with the school system that raises them, the staff, the teachers, everyone, everyone in it makes them feel not respected by the adults they are told to respect. I know many people that have said that they want to protect their children, but it's just from other children. These are children and teenagers, and you're wanting to discriminate against other children. As I have sat here today and listened to everyone's statements they have made, after time, it all comes down to religion. There is a huge line between church and state, and some people here forget to remember that. No one needs to be, be protected from trans adults or trans youth. That is discrimination that we, that you have to protect from someone who is just being the person they were meant to be. I promise your daughter is not afraid to be in the bathroom of someone who is also a girl. I'm sure your son is not afraid to be in the bathroom with someone who's also a boy. And I'm sure none of them are afraid to be in the bathroom who, someone is gender nonconforming, also known as non-binary. People only want to stop what they don't understand. Notice how no one actually speaking today includes the students of said school. Notice how no one actually speaking today includes the students of said schools. I graduated from CCHS in 2017, 2018, and I'm still here fighting for the rights of these students. Everyone is saying how teaching our kids this is wrong, but everyone teaches their kids from the moment they're able to make a conscious thought to be Christian, and nobody sees anything wrong with that. Our progress, our progress will not stop, and we will not stop fighting for the rights of trans youth. Thank you.
Okay, who's, who's next? Who's next?
Crown.
Crown, Jerry Crown? Brad Baker?
Who's, okay, Jerry Crown out there?
We have Jerry Crown.
Who's next?
We have Brad Baker coming.
This may be, are you Mr. Crown or Mr. Baker? Baker, okay. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Appreciate each one of you. We moved to this area in 2014, or 15, 14, 15, and put our children in school before the, just before the pandemic hit us. And we were planning to send them back this year, undecided right now. God's word tells us, yes, as they've said, love your neighbor, but they haven't finished it. There's consequences in God's word for the lifestyle that they've chosen, these people have chosen to live. They're not born that way. It's a choice. I love those people that just spoke, from the bottom of my heart, just like Christ loves them, but I hate the sin, just like He did. He died on the cross for their sins. They need to repent of their sin and turn away from it if they're ever going to enter into heaven. That's God's word. They need to read it. And you men, I don't know how much I'm taking it that all of you are religious, that you go to church, but how much time have you spent on your knees in prayer before making the decisions that you make that affects for generations to come? We had, he's no longer in politics now, but we had a senator in this state that ran on a, what I call quote, unquote, religious ticket. But he told me, he says it's only for Sunday. No, God isn't just a Sunday God. He's there for Monday through Saturday, I'll say. If you just serve Him on Sunday, then take your title of Christianity away. Because God wants you and you 100% every day in the choices you make for yourselves and for everyone else. You're elected into this position and you can be moved from it. Virginia has broken up enough to make a change in the election this November. The only way we're truly going to change is Bible tells us, if we get on our knees and we repent of our sins and turn away from our wicked ways, then we will see revival. That's the only way we've had great awakenings in the past, is on our knees. Maybe we should have some gatherings in our communities like they did back in our beginning years, in 1800, early 1800s, where we had a great awakening across America. Why? Because businessmen got together on their lunch break and prayed. It was only gonna be for one hour, but it ended up being for three hours a day. They closed down their workplaces because it grew so big. That's the only way we're gonna see a true change in our world that we know it. So, I pray that you get your choices from God on a daily basis and not just live a Sunday religion.
Thank you.
Betty Roberts?
Thank you for letting me speak today. I want to give you just maybe about a 10-second background for you, which will tell you why I'm here today. I wasn't born here. I grew up, was born and grew up in the state of Maryland. When I was a child, my parents raised me in a school where I learned how to read and write, learned arithmetic and biology and history and all that good stuff. And I felt safe in my home because my parents protected me, they took me to church, they taught me how to be a decent person. As I got older, I moved to an area in Maryland where it wasn't nothing, literally, it was nothing to sit on your back porch and watch the man who lived in a corner apartment building beat his wife till she couldn't stand up and leave her laying in the courtyard. And then the lady over here on this end of the court, her and her husband got into a fight, and she took a knife and stuck it in his chest, picked up her pocketbook and went to the grocery store. That's the kind of atmosphere that my children were growing up in. I'm like, "Oh, this ain't happening." So I moved here to this state where God is not only mentioned, but revered, because I wanted my family to have a better life. And for a long time, my children grew up that way. And now my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren are attending a school where they're being told that life is not gonna be normal anymore. And I have heard and I respect the remarks that were made about these children that associate themselves as transgender, their, their civil rights and their legal rights. And I understand they have them and they need to be defended and protected, but what about my children? What about my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren that are coming up in this county? They have the same rights. They have the right to be protected. They have the right to be defended for what they stand for. They have the right to know that they can go to school every single day and be taught how to read and how to write and how to add two and two. And to be taught, I, they may act like it sometimes, but it didn't come from monkeys. They were created by God Almighty. I got a few on my May debate that over, but for the most part, my great-grandchildren and my grandchildren are God-fearing children, even the, I have a three-month-old great-grandson who in church this past Sunday, if you look on Facebook, he was praising God. He's three months old. But these children that are being raised to be told, "You have to go into this bathroom regardless of, of what gender you associate with." We're, we're talking about the fear that, that these young children, that by, by the way, we all are the ones who have confused them. They were not created with a sign saying, "Okay, we're gonna make this one a boy, we're gonna make this one a girl, we're gonna make this one a turtle." They weren't labeled at birth. They weren't labeled at birth to hate. We've got so much hatred going on in this country today, and our children were not born into that. We taught them that. They are having struggles. I've heard so much in the last year where depression for our children has become the most prevalent problem in America today. Whose fault? Owls. Because we've taught them so much stupidity. We've taught them how to hate, we've taught them which, you know, like today you can be whatever you wanna be tomorrow, if you don't feel like being that one, it's fine, you can change that tomorrow. But it's acceptable. What about the kids that, that were raised to believe, "I am a little girl, I am a little boy." And they have to be, they're being told today that they're gonna have to go to school and like it or not, they're gonna have to go into that bathroom with fear and intimidation that they're gonna run into somebody that, that, you know, we're talking about the minorities of, of the transgender community. What about our children? They're being bullied because they're not associating themselves with, with this type of madness we're teaching them. We have to stand up for our kids, and we are going to stand before God. God is not pleased with what we're doing. We're teaching our children so much stuff that hasn't got anything to do with education. And we're confusing these precious little minds. Please let me finish this taking out of the air.
Just a moment more.
We, we, who do you think is gonna be electing you people in the future? Not us, our kids. But if we're confusing them about everything else, how are they gonna know how to pick the right person to sit behind that desk?
Thank you.
Or in government?
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, guys. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I stand here as a person who supported their children at public schools with the notion in mind of what was getting ready to come. I also dealt with bullying where there was nothing that was done, but maybe that's for a different day. But I, I was thinking, you know, I'm not from here, I moved here because I married my husband, Charlie, and he is from here. But when I first moved here, I said, "Where do you go, what do you do, what do you eat?" You know? But then we had children, and I grew very fond of this county, and my children worked in public school. But we pulled them out because of that. So I stand before you today to remind you that the majority of people that you've heard from today stand against this, stand against the money that would be spent for the resolution that you proposed. And also as a mother who made a choice for her children and voters who will make a choice in this county for the sake. So I ask you to stand by the majority of what you've heard and find a different resolution. The one that has made with the single-stall bathroom still doesn't resolve the issue for the students.
That's all I have signed up that have came as we've called.
Okay, so that'll, no one else signed up, so that'll conclude our public comment at 7:33? 7:33. Okay, next on the agenda is, let's see, I believe, we'd be back to the report of the superintendent, item A.
Carroll County Summer School Program. Before I start, I thank you guys for coming and sharing your, your thoughts, and they are taken in consideration, and they have been taken in consideration.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment, please?
Go ahead.
I know I'm out of order, like, but I'm sorry, but I'd just like to emphasize the fact that this, we are a democracy. The majority of the voters placed their political leaders in their positions. They were elected by the majority of the people of the state of Virginia. And so if we want to change, you know, what we don't like, we're gonna have to change the way we vote. Now, that's the majority of people, and that's what we got. And so we, the minority, maybe, are stuck with that. And we just have to, I agree, God raises up leaders and God puts them down. So we're gonna trust that come election time, you know, hopefully, we might see a different majority. And that's, you know, again, I appreciate you guys coming and sharing your views, and I appreciate your guts to stand up and, and speak. So, Mr. Pickett, I know good and well, you've been here several times, and I'd just like to say, I appreciate your tenacity. And all we can do is keep the faith.
Thank you. Okay, reported superintendent, number 7A.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to let you know that we started summer session on Monday, June 7th, and it ran through Wednesday, June 30th. We had 18 instructional days. We had 20 students at Fancy Gap, 21 at Gladesboro, 78 at Glavel, 70 at Hillsville, 46 at Laurel, 59 at Oakland, 86 at St. Paul, 131 at the middle school, and 77 at, at the secondary level. Very successful summer school, and I think we're able to get kids back to where they were, or, or not back to where they were, but on the path to back to where they were academically. So we'll, we'll continue to provide remedial services and try and serve the students of Carroll County.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go to the next?
Yeah, item B.
In your package, you have an opening of school calendar of events. There's things such as administrative retreat, our new employee orientation, and doing teacher academies, a system-wide opening. One thing is different this year, we're having a back-to-school bash for parents and students both, from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock on the football field and track at the high school. It's to welcome our kids back to school. There will be food trucks there. The emissions free, the food trucks aren't, but the emissions free, there'll be schools and some of our civic organizations passing out to school supplies. So the, I think the Sheriff's Department plans on doing a demonstration with some of the police dogs and the, the fire department's doing some stuff with smoke on child, you know, in the, the smoke tunnel and, and child fire safety. So we've got several, several fun things planned.
Okay, item C.
I'm sorry, it's August 5th, on a Thursday. C is 2021 Virginia School Board Association Media Honor Roll. And at this time, we would, the Virginia School Board Association's created a media honor roll and has asked that the school system name up three candidates. And our nomination this year is Mr. David Bross from the Carroll News. So you, you were nominated to the Virginia School Board Association Media Honor Roll. We appreciate all the work that, that both of you guys do.
We do have a resolution.
We do have a resolution, if you'd like to read that.
If you can sign and pass it on, please. We'll submit that to the SBA.
Okay, and let's see, have you covered D?
I've not covered D yet, the return-to-school plan. Again, plan to come back on August 11th. Will continue to follow all the cleaning protocol and safety measures that were implemented during the pandemic. Other guidance and recommendation documents have not been released from Virginia Department of Health or the Virginia Department of Education at this time. I do know that the governor, I think, is supposed to make an announcement this Friday about mask mandates. So we'll see what happens there before we make our recommendations.
We still have, we still have, I think, is, am I correct, is part of our plan to still test the, test the children and, you know, do, do other kind of preemptive?
We received a grant from Virginia Department of Health to help us provide test kits in schools to, to help test kids, you know, that may be showing symptoms, and to test our athletes on a weekly basis, or any of our extracurricular band members and chorus members, anybody that, that participates in after-school activities, because they seem to be the, you know, where the most spread occurs. So we'll continue to provide testing for those students, and that was all made available by the Virginia Department of Health.
What we will have to say as a board about mask and non-mask?
We will have a lot to say about that. But it depends on whether it's a man, you know, if it's a state mandate. I mean, that, if it's a state mandate, we don't have any say.
But recommendations are different. I wanted to ask one more thing at the hearing. The little thermometers that we walked through?
Will still have those in place.
Those will still be in place and all that.
Yeah, we'll still keep with all that safety protocol.
That's what I was talking about.
I couldn't hear.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this thing and.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Burnett before we close out superintendent report?
Hopefully, we can get back to as normal a year as possible.
What about buses? I think I had read something about.
The mask mandate is still in effect on public transportation. We're considered public transportation. So we'll see what happens with that.
But as far as you know right now, where things stand, are we able to get all of our kids without necessarily running more buses or more routes? Will be able to at least haul a normal load, so to speak?
It's going to be smaller than what we have had in the past. But, you know, we dealt with that last year and it seemed to work out.
Okay.
You know, there'll be two kids probably to a seat, you know, there won't be any more three kids in a seat, sharing a seat anymore, though. Just mark. Dr. Burnett, do you have any idea about student numbers at this point? I do not, I do not.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? If not, Ms. Questionberry, financial report?
Do you have your report in the packet? It is basically the same report that we talked about at our closeout meeting on June. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have. We ended the year, of course, we had no carryover funds since we had to take care of the room at Glavel and some blessing issues, but it's the same report that you saw a couple weeks ago.
Okay, sounds good. Unless I've missed something, I believe we're.
We had two come from upstairs. I just want to make sure we didn't miss them. They just texted me that they were coming down.
We just wanted to hear the rest of it.
Oh, okay, all right.
May my daughter speak for just a moment, which is a concern she has with the issue that was earlier.
I'll ask the board. I certainly don't want your daughter to be quieted. We did officially close our public comment, but is the board okay with the young lady speaking?
I am.
She's a student. Okay, all right, come forward.
Can you give us your name?
Alexis Bowman.
Alexis Bowman.
I came here as a 14-year-old not only to concern my worries, but also my fears.
Dear, let me, I don't want to interrupt you, but now, it's fine if you're wearing your mask out of a safety concern, but if you'd like to take it down to speak, if it's okay with your mother, you're welcome to do that.
We might hear you enunciate better with this stuff, but it's totally up to you.
Yeah.
I came here as a 14-year-old not only to concern my worries, but also my fears. In second grade, I was sexually assaulted. Oh, at high school?
We have tissue, anybody, do we have, I'm sorry, I don't know why we don't have any down here. There you go. Something we need to do.
Excuse me, was this in the school or on a bus?
It was on a school bus, the bus driver. No, my daughter, it's okay, it's fine, just go onto the next bus because we were transferring those. He only got expelled for a week. Nothing else happened, he didn't get in big trouble. Never been scarred by rape and sexual assaults. I just don't want anyone else to get hurt, bullied or attacked by anyone with those intentions. Thank you for having me.
I would like to ask you a question if I could, okay? And first of all, thank you for sharing something and I understand it's very difficult. I have two daughters myself, it's hard for me to even watch your emotions. As a 14-year-old, you'll be in what grade next year, Carroll?
I'll be ninth grade.
Okay, so I don't know if you heard from upstairs the thought of this board to create single-service restrooms in the high school and middle school in excess of 100 bathrooms. And you expressed that you felt that made you more comfortable.
Yes.
And so that decision, as a ninth-grade student coming to the high school, you feel more comfortable with that decision for all bathrooms to be single-served?
Because that just seems like it would lower the percentages of all that craziness with
Forgetting any transgender concerns, and I apologize for getting out of our normal the way we're supposed to respond, but because you're a student willing to come forward and that's what's been missing from this conversation with us. Do you feel that single-service bathrooms even go beyond just that sense of comfort? I mean, just, have you ever felt other students or heard other students not want to go to a bathroom just because, you know, if it's a girls' bathroom, other girls can come in while I'm using the restroom? Is that something you feel is common in terms of students feeling comfortable in an open bathroom?
A lot of people in my school don't even want to go to the bathroom. There are teacher bathrooms where it's only a single bathroom.
Okay.
And they go in there, they have to ask a teacher because there are, like, people hurt other people in the bathroom. It's craziness in there.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I have a second? I'm disturbed by not only today's kids, but a long time ago, the abuses that have gone on, from bullying and it, maybe we need to take a look at that and look at the staff intervention because a lot of times it doesn't even get to the principal and.
What I'm going to ask, if you're okay with that, then I'd ask you to speak with Dr. Burnett and he can kind of give you a rundown on all the things that are out there.
Right.
And then have discussion about other things that might possibly, you know, other things that we can possibly do. There's always room to get better.
Yeah, and I'll be the first to admit, it's not a perfect situation. We got cameras everywhere, we have teachers standing out in hallways in class changes, but, you know, you can't be everywhere at all times. And we have resource officers in our buildings and those guys do a wonderful job, but they can't be everywhere. Absolutely, and I'm aware of all of that, I just.
But I mean, get together, get together, if that's okay with you.
Good suggestion and Dr. Mark, I'll give you a call here sometime this week, if that's okay.
All right, thank you. It gets us down to closed meeting, so.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to section 2.2, 3711A of the Code of Virginia. I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. The discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, officers, appointees, or employees is authorized by section 2.2, 3711A1.
Can I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of entering closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are in closed session. Thank you all for being here tonight, appreciate it.